Call this meeting to order. Kingfisher, August 12th, City Commission Meeting. If you would join me at a flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll join Jim in the prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we Thy sons and daughters bow our head in prayer this evening as we assemble together in this City Commission Meeting. We're grateful, Father, for the blessings of living in Kingfisher and enjoying the blessings of prosperity. We're grateful for the freedoms and liberties we enjoy as a people, as part of the State of Oklahoma and the nation, United States of America. We're grateful for the bounty we have in our lives and for the bounty this great country provides. We ask Thy blessings to be upon the men and women that serve in our armed forces and first responders as they provide safety for us in this community and the communities around. We pray, Father, for Thy Spirit to be in this meeting as we discuss the affairs of Kingfisher, that we might be united, we might be able to share our opinions, and be able to move this government forward in a positive and uplifting way. Again, we express our gratitude to Thee for all that Thou hast given unto us and for the many blessings of living in America. In this prayer, we offer unto Thee, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I didn't know you were going to do that in the King James Version.
Oh.
The first item on the agenda is the consent document. If there are any questions regarding any of those or anything we need to pull out? Anything there?
I do not.
If not, I entertain a motion for approval of the consent document.
I make a motion that we approve the docket.
Have a motion in a second. Is this working tonight?
Yeah. Are you guys all up? Because y'all are all in. It shows she's logged in on my side.
Okay, she's got it.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. We're good. All right. There you guys go.
Item carries. Consent document approved. First item on the scheduled business is the discussion of possible action to approve the city manager's recommendation of Travis Gray as Chief of Police pursuant to Section 2.6 of the Kingfisher City Charter. Would you like to comment or go to that, Jim?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen of the public, Dave Katrin tenured his retirement on the 10th of May earlier this year. And Travis Gray was the Assistant Chief at the time. He came highly recommended by Chief Katrin. I hadn't had a lot of time to spend with Travis one-on-one, and so I extended to him the interim police chief's position and told him that I just wanted an opportunity to work with him and get to know him more on a personal basis. I'd only met him once or twice before Chief Katrin's retirement. I have thoroughly enjoyed getting to know Travis on a personal basis. He is a man of integrity. He has great capacity. I've learned some things about his past. He's a military veteran, born and raised here in Kingfisher. He has deep roots. I've come to learn, I thought he had a Hispanic side to him, but he does not speak Spanish. He is a Spaniard, but he doesn't speak Spanish. He is just a good man, a good communicator. He and I have worked on a couple of issues related to the business community as well as citizens in the community, and he's been able to resolve those issues in a professional way. I will tell you that when Dave was getting ready to tenure his retirement, he highly recommended Travis to serve as the chief. Chief Baker, the former police chief, also wrote a nice letter of recommendation. I got several calls from citizens and businesses when they found out that Chief Katrin was retiring that came highly recommended with Travis. I just wanted some time to come up with my own recommendation. And I can recommend, as I shared with you in my memo before I went on vacation, that I have no reservations with Chief Gray. I think he's a quality, quality individual. He has a good temperament. And, you know, in law enforcement, there's a lot of discretion. And I've shared with Chief Gray my philosophy on law enforcement. I have a son that spent over 21 years, he's still with the Chicago Police Department, and I've done ride-alongs with him up there. And so I've always been an advocate for law enforcement and the importance that they play in the community. But I've also said, you don't have to arrest everybody. You don't have to give them a speeding ticket. You know, there's discretion in the law. And Chief Gray has that same attitude and attribute. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to have intimately get to know him and his family and a little bit about his hobbies. He loves to hunt and fish, and, you know, he enjoys his time off with his family. So Mayor, Commissioners, I can give you my highest recommendation for Travis. I think he'll do a great job for the city of Kingfisher as we go forward, and would recommend highly that you concur in my recommendation.
You've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
It'd be my honor to make the recommendation of Travis Gray. I've known him for 25 years, so I will make the motion to hire Travis Gray as Chief of Police.
I will second that motion. Very favorable, well.
Please tell me something's not going to explode.
Why would you go over here?
That item carries unanimously. Chief Gray? Yeah? You want to say anything? You don't? Would you like to say anything?
Fair enough. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
Put him on the spot.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Did you get all that for the papers and all the items?
A man of very few words.
Well, I appreciate that, because the next time Jim presents, we're going to put the three-minute clock up there. No, I'm just saying. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Nighthawk regarding water nodes and leaf meters. So, welcome, Nighthawk. And the floor is yours.
Okay, I just want to do a small presentation here. You know, in budget meeting, we allowed it to $250,000 to get this thing started. And right now, we're, we've had them come up. They've given us, they've kind of given us a presentation of what that 250 will be spinoff. And I'll turn it to them. I look forward to this.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, folks. I'm John Scott with Nighthawk. I presented here a few months ago on the Nighthawk system, and we've been working with Jeremiah and Mark here the past, it's been about a year, close to a year. So what we're presenting in this first, I guess, phase of the system is 945 water endpoints that'll marry up to your existing water meters out there in the field. These water endpoints allow your water meters to talk to our, what we call our cellular hub meters. So in the pricing we sent out, there's 305 of the hub meters, which will take care of the line share, if not all, of your hub meters for your territory. These hub meters, they act as electric meters. More importantly, they're actually the scaffolding, the communication scaffolding for the entire system for your AMI. So it'll pick up the water endpoints as well as any electric meters you folks roll out over time and subsequent phases. So we're looking at 945 water endpoints, 305 hubs. Of course, 945 water endpoints does not satisfy all of your water. I think there's over 2,800, I believe, water out there. So it's close to a third of your water. But it gets you a very good head start on getting the water out there. Plus, you'll have the majority, if not all, of your cellular hub meters already in place, which gives you folks a lot of flexibility in how you roll out the rest of your system on the electric and the water side.
And just to add, over the last six to nine months, we have beta-tested their technology to see, we've had problems with our existing company, Eaton. It just hasn't functioned well, but some of the outlying areas have been our biggest problem. And that's where we've focused the last six months, and we've had great success. Is that correct, Jeremiah?
Yeah, we're at about 80, 85%. They're not reading right now. If they're not reading, it's because there's not a hub. There's not a hub here. You have to grab a hold of it and send it down.
Yeah. So we're going to do this in, right now, as we presented at the budget, we're going to do it over four years, 25% each year. I've got a spreadsheet of what it costs us right now under the current system. We're currently paying an individual to go out and read the water meters, and then we're having to go out and turn them on, turn them off, when we have to do shut-offs. And that fiscal cost, when you add the labor and the data entry that has to go in, it's about $200,000 a year. So ultimately, we will save that money that we're spending once we get this fully operational. Nighthawk is in a number of communities already in Oklahoma. Mark has reached out to them, and they have had great success. The current company we have has had no, there are no communities that they're in at all in Oklahoma. Neither Mark, Jeremiah, myself, Brittany, were here when that contract was awarded. The support from our current vendor has been lacking, and I'm saying that courteously, because it just has not met our expectations. Mark has had more interaction with them and has been very frustrated at the lack of communication when we've had problems and tried to get them resolved. And so it's our opinion that we just need to cut our ties from the past and look to the future. And in our recommendation, as we've watched Nighthawk over the last six months, it is the future for our smart meter system here in Kingfisher. Would you add anything to that, Mark or Jeremiah?
No. I think that, I think that they're going to provide our customers the portal. When we get a little further down the road, we're going to be able to get our customers a portal so they can see their usage. You know, this is something Eaton said that they could do, but seven years later, they can't do. We, I've seen, I've seen and talked to people that has chip rolls from Comanche. He said that they were 100%. So I reached out to these communities. Eaton does not have a service, doesn't have anybody in Oklahoma. I know they're really heavy in Colorado, Colorado and other. So I know that, that they're not, they're just don't have anybody here. You know, we got our new gateways in, and seven days later, I'm still waiting for a call. It's just been that way. We need help with something we don't get.
I have technical questions behind.
Yes, sir.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Three-to-one ratio for meter to hub. The hubs are cellular, so there's a cellular modem in the hub, or is that just a central hub?
So the ratio is more about just trying to maximize the water endpoints once all the hub meters are out there. So 305 hubs are what you need to satisfy your communication scaffolding for your, essentially, the electric footprint of your entire city.
That hub is electric, is the electric meter itself. That's what we're calling it.
Yes, a hub meter. That's correct. Yes, thank you, Mark.
It has a cellular communication underneath, in the glass.
So you're actually looking at closer to, on a citywide scale, closer to probably a 10-to-1, if not higher, ratio for every one hub meter. That's how many endpoints will call into the hub meter. You're seeing they have a 3-to-1 ratio now, because we're going to roll out all of these scaffolds you would need for your entire city within the footprint. So you can then deploy the water meters or the electric leaf meters at your discretion, at your leisure, whenever budgets allow through the rest of the rollout.
Is the communication from hub to meter unlicensed or licensed?
It's all, it's, we use a public cellular network. So we're using a private channel on the either Verizon or AT&amp;T network.
At the cellular hub, though? But from the meter to the hub, as they communicate, you know, that's, is that unlicensed using?
The RF, we're using a 2.4 gigahertz.
Okay, that's unlicensed.
Yeah, unlicensed. Yes, sir.
You have pretty good success with that?
Absolutely. We've been in business for 30 years. System, how long has Chuck had his system? Probably about eight years now, going on a.
Yeah, getting there.
It's been tried and true over the course of decades. It's topology we have out there. Absolutely.
So is there any type of RF study done to know if it's, 2.4 gets really busy and really noisy?
Right. We actually, yeah, back then.
Traveling too far with that.
Yeah, yeah. Years ago, we actually started at 900 megahertz. And we actually moved away from 900 over to 2.4, because we found actually we had less interference with things like vegetation, buildings on the 2.4. And we don't have any collision issues that I've run into. And the reason for that is, I'm not saying you can't have collision issues, but we have such redundancy in our cellular hub meters.
They can talk to any one of them?
Yes, it's a self-optimizing, self-healing system. So if they can't talk to the hub meter it thought it was going to call into, it can then reroute to the next available.
Okay, so is 300 the recommended or required? I mean, that seems to me it's a little heavy.
So what we did is, we actually ran your meters through our GIS. We applied our criteria to it. We looked at, we usually plan for 500 to 750 feet for the hub meters to have the redundancy in communication. And yours showed about 305 for your electric footprint.
So that should be, that's this full system done, or is that just this wave?
It should be the full system. Now, there might be some areas outside the electric footprint that require some spot areas to put in these hub meters, but the vast majority of your, of your communication scaffolding is taken care of in that first one. Yes, sir.
I bet you're bothering walking.
And by the way, since our last meeting, I guess a few months ago, we've actually deployed, or pretty much deployed, almost done, both Pawnee and Cushing, Oklahoma as well.
Any other questions? I have one question regarding the old system, really. What value is there in those old meters? Do we, do we recognize any value?
Jim, I know that when we did the first time through, that the old meters were sold. Do you remember maybe Anita? I don't, but somebody bought all of those meters, the old meters that we took out.
Those were standard meters.
Yeah, those were different meters. They were surplused, is what they were. But I can't tell you who bought them, but they were surplused and sold.
Do we have the ability, once we replace these with Nighthawk? If that's the direction we're going, do we have salvage value in these?
I would think that they would have more salvage, because they are, they are an AMI mode, I meant, meter.
Good.
I mean, I, I just have to see what's out there, Jim. I don't want to say it'd be great, but, you know, because I haven't.
We're keeping the brass meters, the water meters.
That's what I'm saying. The meters are going to stay. We're just going with a different note. Our meters that we got right now through Eaton will read with their communication. They've already tested it. So it's not going to be a deal of we have to go through the whole system on every meter and put all new meters in. It'll just be a matter of connecting three wires or plugging them in, whichever case we decide to do.
Either plug or splice, right? Before plug, the splice works as well.
So, but, but we're not replacing any meters. The only time we'll replace a meter is if one of the wires that go to, that go to the register, if it gets cut and we can't reconnect it, we'll have to figure that out as we go. But that was going to be a problem either with Eaton or with, if we go to Nighthawk. That's not going to change on that part.
Electric meters will be surplused.
Yeah.
Battery life?
On the water endpoints, we have a 20-year warranty. That's 10-year replacement, full replacement, 10-year prorated. So they're, they're built for 20-year lifespan, but again, it's, you know, it's a piece of technology buried under, you know, sometimes multiple feet of mud. So, but we do have a 20-year warranty on it.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Thank you.
The next, we're going to go, I'm sorry.
Oh, are we planning on having, I know, the way Jim was giving us his piece of it was as if at some point, we're going to have a discussion and action.
Item C is discussion and action, and we can do that while we're, it's the same item, and then we'll go to 911.
So the next item on the agenda is the discussion of possible action to approve purchase 945 water mesh pit mount with three foot of wire and NiCor Series 3 connector and 305 25200 cellular hub meter with disconnect in the amount of $249,861.55. You've heard the presentation. Do we have a motion?
So we're doing that upon the fact that we're switching this stuff and all that?
This, we budgeted this, too, right?
That's correct.
This is the thing that our budget's amount.
This is a payment. This is not a full.
That's correct. This is the first phase.
Payment one of one, yeah, for this year.
The total cost will be almost a million dollars. There'll be four of these.
Four a year.
Per year, annually, for four years.
Annually, yeah.
And we, and we put it in this year's budget.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the only one for this fiscal year.
Yes.
That we budgeted for.
Yeah.
Which will get most of your water meters running.
Right.
In the city.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we, do I have to read all?
No. Just have to item C.
Make a motion, C.
I'll, I'll second it.
Kyle.
Oh, I can't be there. Maybe I've not checked in.
I can second this one.
Yeah, because you came in in between, so I'm in, but you can't vote. Sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll second.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Just making sure.
I was distracted by the sun starting to mount. It's in the helicopter.
Well, he's, the equipment they're in is not working.
Okay, Don, have you voted yet?
Oh, sorry. I got it.
Got it. There you go.
That motion carries. We're going to move item K up to in front of D, which the item, item K is the discussion and possible action to approve the E911 center agreement. Would you like to?
I can carry the weight on this.
Yeah, you're enough. Yes, yes.
Ryan Dethridge and I have been talking the last couple of months. You have a current contract with the county to do 911 services. He and I, and Chief Gray and Chief Gibson and I met with him and the chairman of the County Commission to discuss their budget, and I feel comfortable with what they're proposing. One thing that they have not done in the past is set aside money for replacement of equipment. And so as we were going through the numbers, there's about $250,000 that's being put in an escrow account to replace equipment. The equipment that they have now is, my understanding is, they got it through a grant? Was it a state grant?
It was a portion of a grant, but some of it came out of the general fund. Yes, sir. It was a 2575.
Okay.
So we do have some other, because some of it came from the general fund, some of it's.
Of the county?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that was done appropriated in '23, '24 budget.
Okay. The formula they use is they looked at our calls for service and our population and made that, he has a total budget, and then he divided it by a percent. And both police chief and fire chief concurred in the calls for service. We can't really challenge the population. We cannot do dispatching on our own for what we're being charged, for $97,000. I shared with Ryan, when I was in Rogers County with Claremore, we had a consolidated dispatch center, and we had a board independent of the county commissioners. I chaired it. The city of Claremore had appointed me to serve on that board. It was a five-member board. One of the commissioners sat on that board, and then the other three seats came from at-large in the county. And we managed it well. Ryan's telling me at one time, they had something similar to that, but it was hard to get a quorum. And so now, the three commissioners meet on the fourth Monday of the month at the end of their regular commission meeting at 9:30. I told them, I'm going to start attending now that I know when they meet. I think it's important for, at least us, we're the largest community in, in Kingfisher County, to have some kind of oversight. I'm, I'm comfortable with what they're proposing in the contract. They haven't changed anything. It's the same amount of what it was a year ago. Ryan's telling me that the county has picked up a little bit more of the costs of running the 911 center, but the other communities are paying about the same amount they paid last year. I don't know, Ryan, is there anything else you want to add to my comments?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. Any questions regarding this E911 contract? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. That we approve. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. By Commissioner Taylor.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Have a motion in a second.
Okay, Kyle, you can vote.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. We'll, we'll jump back to.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you so much.
We're on item D now.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of possible action to approve ordinance 2024 006, adopting and enacting the Kingfisher City Code 2024. Any, any comments regarding this?
This is done just every few years to codify the work that you've done last few years. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Do we have a motion?
I'll motion that we approve the item.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Burpoe, and second by Commissioner Taylor.
Kyle.
That item carries. Next item is the discussion of possible action to declare the previous ordinance that we just voted on, 2024 006, as an emergency. And I assume that's for the reason that it's.
We want to have a good, solid date when you say it's effective, so setting that out now. Nothing has changed between the two versions, what we've had before and what we've got now. It's just now all compiled and nice and clean for everybody to see.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve. I to me.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously as well. The next item is item F, discussion of possible action to approve resolution 2024 006, notifying the public of the publication of the Kingfisher City Code 2024 and requiring filing of said code in compliance with state law.
Just the last step in the process requires Brittany and I to go file a few things and get binders put together, but final step in the process, and then we're moving forward.
Do we have a motion?
I'll motion that we accept item F, resolution.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Thank you.
Yes.
See, now, it's not so much fun when you don't have to read the whole thing.
I know. It takes more time.
You can do it on the next one if you want to.
Makes it more exciting. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. You're trying to set me up, aren't you? I see where you're going with that.
Just saying, if you want to read one, that'd be a good one to read.
It would be, wouldn't it?
Be as long as Jim's speech over there.
You have to turn the timer on. It passed. I don't know why it's not moving. Sorry.
The motion carries. So the next item is item G, discussion of possible action to approve ordinance 2024 07, amending title 10, Chapter 1 of the Kingfisher City Code regarding the regulations for building residential property maintenance. residential property maintenance, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, gas, and fire prevention codes and adopting appropriate versions of certain model codes covering said matters. Modifying the King Fisher City Code to amend the appropriate provisions of the adopted models, model codes related to roofing requirement, providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Ms. Garcia?
Yeah.
That was a lot of words. I'm assuming you've got some bullet points to give them the Cliff Notes of what they're approving?
Yes. So in 2024-007, so it spells out right now that we've got certain codes that we adopt and then every few years we have to revisit that to look at that and what, what year we're going to adopt or not. So this first section just ties us directly with the state. So the state goes through basically a year-long process of having multiple councils that they go and they review each of the different building codes and then they decide to make amendments and then adopt, right? Or, or not to adopt. Sometimes they're a little bit, they, they stay with the, the current year rather than moving forward. So since they're already kind of vetting that whole thing, I think it's, it saves us each year, each couple of years of going through that same process. It's a redundancy that I think could be eliminated. So that eliminates that. And then it also adds the International Property Maintenance Code, which is a code that many cities are already using. It helps fight light, basically. That's the first point. The next section is unchanged. The third section, it simply goes through each specific building code and makes a couple of amendments. One is a requirement of ice barriers. The other one is a requirement of tie-down straps. And a third amendment is simply the elimination of one of the exceptions that the NEC has, the Electric, National Electrical Code. The, the next section is about who we decide to have register with our city. So right now, we only register electrical contractors, mechanical contractors, plumbing, and refers. So the big guys that come into town, the general contractors, we have no paper trail. We're, we're not required to have anything, they're not required to register for us. So wanting to change that, anybody that's doing anything, that's really part of the structure of the building. So we added like concrete masons in there. So painters, no. Somebody that's putting up drywall, no. These aren't things that we feel like really could be safety issues. But those that are, that require the most responsibility, making them go through the same process as the smaller guys do, it just makes sense. And then.
Where do you draw, where do you draw the line on that?
Well, we've only right now.
I mean, I, I thought I read in there that if it's a structural change.
Right.
Or load bearing.
Right.
Then, then it basically requires a permit, but if it's not, if it's, if it's.
Drywall, no.
If you're taking, even if you're taking down a wall that's not, not a load bearing or structural wall in your, in your house.
Right now, we don't require a permit for that.
Right.
And I don't see why we would.
Right. I agree. I agree with that. But I just want to clarify, it's just more.
Right.
It's based off of load bearing and structural changes.
Right. So like if you're gonna put siding on a building.
Right.
No. Paint, drywall, no. We're not, we're not talking about gingerbread, trim around windows. But we're doing concrete. We're, we're actually doing the whole building, right? We're framing it up.
Yeah.
We should have something that says, yeah, these guys are, we're aware, we, we have a paper trail back in the future if there's issues. That's all that is.
Just remember, maybe you weren't going down this path just the way you asked the question. Remember, this is registering the contractor, not the specific job. So, so the contractor that's taking down that non-load-bearing wall might probably already be registered because they typically do that kind of work. Just the specific job might not need that, so. Not, not a job-by-job thing.
So if you as a resident was taking a load-bearing wall, you shouldn't, but if you were.
Yeah.
She wasn't saying you, but you shouldn't. But you shouldn't. And then the last change is just to make sure that if we have issues of concern for outside of our floodplains, because the floodplains are highly regulated, right? But sometimes we have issues that are not floodplains and that's just takes care of any concerns. So like if we go to a property that's having stormwater issues or having heightened soil issues, that we can stop for a minute and say, okay, let's do some engineering and make sure that this is safe moving forward, not only for the people that are gonna be buying these homes, but for the surrounding areas, especially when it deals with storm waters. And, and that's it.
I will say on that one, it took me a while to get my head wrapped around it. I still might not fully be there, but I look at this as almost kind of a second chance trivia, because of course, like with the plat, we should have already looked at that before the plat was approved. But things change over time, so something that's been platted for five, 10, 15, 20 years, there may be some changes that make you want to look and, you know, make sure that the water's still doing what we think it should and all of that. So it gives us a chance to look at it when it's time to build on that specific property as well.
Any questions for Ms. Garcia? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item G.
Have a motion?
Chicken.
Second. I'll second. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I assume that.
Yeah.
Five A's, okay. That motion carries. Item H is discussion, possible action to approve ordinance 2024-008, amending zoning regulations and permitted uses in the zoning classifications I-1 light industrial, providing for additional uses of property allowed upon obtaining a conditional use permit provided, providing for severability. Any question?
Let me take a stab at this one. So this is honestly a little bit of corrective matter that some things had proceeded in a way that maybe they shouldn't have, but we had allowed it and then went back and looked and thought that it would still be okay to let this fit in a specific zone. So y'all are aware that we've got a gym out at the industrial park. Technically, isn't a classification for that to fit out there. You know, some of those, those folks that have property out there have come in and either rezoned and that causes issues because we're doing spot rezoning at that point in time, where if we make this change, you don't have to go through a spot zone. You'd come back, you'd ask for a conditional use permit that would allow you to use that property outside of its normal uses. And it gives us a chance to, you know, kind of look around. And you think of the industrial park, there's quite a bit of heavy commercial instead of light industrial maybe that's out there. So allowing a use like that might fit out there. So it's hopefully to be able to clean some of that up and make sure we're all working from the same sheet of music.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve H. I'll go and see if we have questions.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
That motion carries. The next item is item I, discussion, possible action to approve ordinance 2024-009, requiring permits for panhandling in public rights of way and setting regulations during such activities. Would you like to comment regarding that?
I'll keep my comments brief. This was an item that came up earlier in the summer that Travis and I had to deal with. We had a firm from Dallas that was up here soliciting funds from the public and it just got a little bit out of hand. And I had to pull the welcome mat and encourage them just to move along. Travis did some research, got ahold of Oklahoma City and Edmund with their ordinances and how they're dealing with this subject. I asked Jared to put something together that would work for King Fisher. And so with that brief summary, is there anything you want to add, Jared, to the?
Only thing I'd add is it's a complicated issue because there's free speech implications with it and all that. So the way we tried to set it up was we want to know what's going on in our city. So you, you go, you get that permit. Not a lot to that process. The only place anything comes to kick in is if somebody's running in and out of traffic or harassing people as they go by. So instead of, you know, trying to be on the front side of saying, no, you're not welcome here, it's more of a, hey, you know, come on, we, we know people do this for, you know, charitable purposes, but we've got to all comply with some rules and common decency. So set that up. So if somebody does act outside of that, we have some recourse to ask them to move on. And if they're, you know, persistent enough about not doing it the right way, hopefully that provides us the leg to stand on to say, hey, probably not worth coming back either.
Currently, we don't have anything on the books.
Right.
And they were using the intersection where 81 and 33. And I was just nervous. Somebody gets hurt, gets hit, it's gonna be a liability on the city. And so I, I felt like we needed some belt, suspender, or something on the books to give us some kind of protection and regulation.
This doesn't stop them. This just gives us the ability to give some guidelines.
That's correct.
We're, we're aware of what's going on and provide some more police presence if needed, you know. We're just aware of what's going on and could support it needed, but like you said, it doesn't stop anything.
You can remove them if they haven't gotten a permit.
Correct. If they haven't gotten a permit, you know. There's no cost to the permit. Yeah, no, no cost to the permit. You come in, I think it's, you know, name, the date you're planning on doing it. Do you need, is there anything we need to be aware of that we need to prepare for? So it's not anything.
So when they come in and they say dates, if they do it outside of the dates, does that make it outside of the permit? Or, okay, so they need to have like a plan.
Exactly. Exactly.
And come in during business hours.
The ordinance in Oklahoma City was tested in the courts and it's been upheld. And so that's why we're using it as a guidepost for us. We're not as big as Oklahoma City. But I was just a little surprised. These guys came out of Dallas and why they picked King Fisher. You know, I think they picked that intersection because it's a, it's a busy intersection. But it just became a very heavy burden. And we were getting complaints on Facebook. The chamber was calling me and so I ended up.
What's the implication of that being, you know, those are US highways. They're not, they're not municipal roadways. So, I mean, just specifically to that intercept, to that intersection, there's gotta be like some state rules around the ability to do that. I'm sure there are. I haven't looked into all of those. But I mean, you've got to mix up federal highway and state both. But again, so many people don't want to touch it because there, there is that constitutional side of it. So how do you structure it? And, you know, the state passes so many things off to us to have to deal with. I mean, once they build it, it's ours to maintain and deal with. So I would guess that they didn't just for that reason, so they don't have to worry about it. Yeah.
Well, the biggest concern there though would be a safety issue. And that, that is concerning more than, if they're in and out of traffic, that's, that's problematic for them as well as the traveling public. So gotta be some guidance.
Does that mean our firefighters, when they do their annual thing, have to get a permit?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they want to trade everybody.
Anybody, you know, anybody soliciting donations, you know. And these guys were just getting very aggressive. They, they were knocking on the windows and getting a little bit aggressive.
That's where the problem comes in, is if it's a consensual conversation, that's fine. But if you're forcing a conversation with somebody, then it's not, not very good.
And, and when I just told them the welcome mat was being pulled, they understood what I was saying.
Because it'd been done before.
Yeah. They, they packed up. They were very polite, you know. I had one of our police officers with me and they packed up and, you know.
One thing I'd ask, I mean, this was added a little late to our agenda. And it didn't give us a lot of time to look at that, so.
And, and I apologize for that. It's just, it's a complicated enough issue that it just took longer than I would like. So, but yeah, I do apologize.
Yeah.
I'll make motion to approve item I.
So my next question is, is it gonna be something we put in the paper and all that kind of stuff so everybody knows? Who maybe are used to.
We, we update.
Like our normal areas.
Yeah, we, we update regularly, of course, with all of our code being online. Within two or three months, it will.
We'll make sure it's in because he's doing that.
It gets posted in the paper.
I just thought, I don't know of anybody, I mean, I don't remember except for the firefighters, anybody else that is on the corner, but I, you know, maybe I just don't pay, which I don't pay attention. So I just meant if there was like regular civic organizations that are used to doing it, they probably wouldn't know.
It'll just be in the ordinance and they can look it up or if they call up here.
That was something Chief Gray and I had talked about.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
Yes.
Oh, no, we've had it for a while. You can't. We've had it for three weeks.
That item carries unanimously as well. Next item is item J, discussion, possible action to approve application payment number one for asphalt, asphalt paving at the cost of $238,022.50 to Atlas Paving. So do we have any, do we have a motion for that?
We've had it for a while, but we have to approve it in city meeting. So this is the first one they asked for and they gave it to us three weeks ago. So just to let you know, they haven't asked for any type of payment from us until now. So.
Okay. Motion to approve item J.
And I will second the motion.
Yes.
Item J carries as well. Next item is item L, discussion, possible action to enter into executive session for real property at lots 18 and 19, block 19 in the city of King Fisher, as authorized by Oklahoma State Statute, title 25, section 307B1. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
Make a motion we enter into executive session.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. We have a motion to reconvene from executive meeting.
I'll motion we reconvene.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we are reconvened as the, in the regular meeting of the city commissioner, city of King Fisher. The next item on the agenda is item N, discussion, possible action to purchase real property at lots 18 and 19 in block 19 in the city of King Fisher. Do we have a motion regarding that?
I make a motion that we buy properties at lot 18 and 19 in the city of King Fisher.
For the purchase price of?
For the purchase price of.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. I'm like, it's not here.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a second?
We're, we're adding the, the purchase price on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Yeah, just so it's in the motion.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know until you come out and tell me. Who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, there you go. Kyle.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. I assume you two fellows were here for that?
Hey, we are. We are.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Ms. Nita?
Hi, Jim. You guys will please look at the numbers that were on these reports this time. We have on the general fund, we have a gain of $270,000, mainly due to 522 money. We've got $285 on 522 this month.
$285?
$285,000. Of course, some of the, a couple of the categories were high. A lot of that's annual fees for, on the general and on the, on the parks. We had some annual fees. But still, 270 for the year, which the sales tax. two hundred and seventy for the year, which the sales tax came in a little bit lower than last month, I looked up on the past, one of the main differences is there was probably more oil field and roofing construction last year than this year.
Did you jump to the sales tax report, is that what you're doing?
That's what she's doing, discussing, so you looked at July of twenty-three and August of twenty-three and compared it.
There really weren't any bulk payments until that one really high one, when that month hits, we'll discuss the fact that we had one-year-old money hit.
Talking about September?
Yeah.
Yeah, September, October.
So that's where that spike came from, but on this one, there weren't any spikes, there wasn't anything really that we got downgraded on.
But we can also recognize, just to mention that, we can also recognize that the revenue of July and August is less than the previous two years.
Unless there's somebody that hasn't got their tax, I don't look to make sure everybody has theirs paid in, that's why there was that one spike in September, because somebody went a year without paying tax, and so I don't look for that.
But what Commissioner...
That's impossible.
Commissioner Mecklenburg is looking at a trend, and I would agree with you, Commissioner, I am a little troubled that we may be going into a recession, people just, you know...
It's also a election year, and anybody that's in the oil field will tell you that.
They've made some interest rate changes, and they're, you know, they're making adjustments, but, you know, the market crashed last week, and, not crashed, I should say crashed, but had a rough, rough time, and we...
It hurt some four-one K's, yeah.
Grocery bills are still forty-three percent higher than they were a year ago, so it hurts.
So it's just a trend that we need to be aware of?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
That was city, sales tax, and public works page, we have a gain of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, you'll see that we got a pretty good number there on power plant, we had three months' worth of capacity come in all at once, and the bump in other revenues was one reimbursement, and then we got our annual rent payment on the Throckmorton place, and once again, administration, the bump on that annual fees, this is that time.
This did not include, our increase of rates went up...
This did.
This did include the increase in rates, okay.
This was, this does have the...
The first month.
The first month, yes.
So go back, Nita, on the, I'm sorry, I don't have, yeah, thank you, so two hundred and fifty-two, go down just a little bit, two fifty-two, and that is because we had, one, partly because we had three payments of production for the...
Capacity, yeah.
Capacity for, what would, what are those payments?
The one that we normally would've gotten by itself was around sixteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken, so it says sixteen...
So three months, three months would be, would be fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it says fifty-two is what we got.
Fifty-two, so essentially, we'd have one of those payments, take out...
Right.
Take out thirty-six, thirty-two thousand dollars, so essentially, we would've been, we still would've been positive two, two twenty-two for the month.
Yes, and actually, our transfer to KPWA, since it was an odd number, and we knew that they had some things going on, we transferred a little bit higher amount, that'll be forty thousand dollars for the next eleven months, but we did fifty for this one.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the two fifty-two would've disappeared if it was, if it wasn't for those, you know, that, that, those three payments instead of, but it looks like it didn't impact it very much, that's good, okay.
Then our last page is our cash, our unencumbered balance at the end of the month was nine point six approximately million.
And of the two point five, one point, one point two something is the roads?
Yes, that is the, the roads contract for the two, we approved the first payment on one of them today.
So which will get reimbursed, so essentially, our unencumbered...
We've already got the money.
Well, we've already got the money, we've been drawing interest on the money.
Oh, we already got the money, okay, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah, 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 okay.
So we got the money a year ago?
Yeah, we got it a while.
Almost a year ago, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that is where we're at, is there any other questions?
Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nita.
The next item is item P, the city manager's report.
Just a couple of things that I didn't cover in my report I sent you before I went on vacation, I was up to Shaw Park, it is almost complete, the doors are locked, I went up there this afternoon trying to get a picture, Gary got up there, Kyle, and did see they have water spigots at the same location of where they had them at the other, in Oklahoma Park, so there is water access to clean the bathrooms.
Did you get the pictures, or did he just send me the pictures?
He sent me the pictures, I saw them, I will be glad when that project gets wrapped up, it's a beautiful bathroom, we've spent a little bit of money up there on the tennis courts for pickleball, and we got the lights fixed, so that whole area is gonna be, hopefully another attraction for the community, we talked about the asphalt, Aztec paving, is it Atlus? Yeah.
Jim, can I stop you for just a second?
Sure.
Before we move on from Shaw Park?
Yeah.
I noticed that we re, we re-upped our landscaping with Mulhern for Shaw Park, does that include mowing it and stuff, or is that just the flower beds?
No, just the flower beds.
So we are still responsible for mowing it and doing up with everything, okay, all right.
And I'm gonna get the crew up there to get that extra dirt out, there's some concrete that may, it needs to be cleaned up a little bit, but it's definitely a huge improvement over what we saw.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, thank you.
Are the bathrooms open?
No.
Okay, do we have a date for that?
They were still...
I'm gonna call Bob Bullen back in the morning, and see, he, when we talked before I went on vacation, he says, I should be all done by the fifteenth of August, I was really surprised I found them locked when I went up there this afternoon.
Around two-thirty, they were up there working though.
Oh, were they?
In regards to that contract, all I would ask is that you close that contract out appropriately with a final inspection before we make payment, and that somebody, you or one of your folks or multiple people, go through that with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that it met everything that we desired in regards to the contract, because we've not done that in a lot of situations, so.
Bob has been...
Yeah, for sure.
You know, he's a good guy, he hasn't asked for any partial payments or anything, he's just gonna give me one invoice at the end, that's just the way he is, he's got a big car.
The only thing I would ask, Jim, is the locks, the automatic locks, we need to make sure on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
So that has to have internet also then too, right?
Which we've already talked to Pioneer about that, so yes, I'm on it, on that part.
It's probably not installed?
No, it won't be until, I tried to tell them the exact day, they told me that I need to let them know.
So that will also be able to have cameras, the rec, cameras and locks, right?
Probably not gonna open those until we have those ready to go, is that the assumption?
Probably so.
We'll keep the porta-potties up there.
But I will get on it as soon as I can, if they can go up there, I'll do that.
Heck, you've spent a hundred thousand dollars on your porta-potties since we've closed that, I'm just kidding. We spent some money.
Scratch that.
That was not...
I'm gonna get called a citizen. Uprising.
Yeah, sorry.
They are moving on Starlight, I went up there this afternoon, the mayor and I talked about that, I don't know when they built that road, but there's about an inch of asphalt that they took off, and there's no aggregate, they must've just laid asphalt on dirt, it's gonna be, those folks are gonna be happy when that's all done, but it's gonna be a challenge to get it done.
For the record, I was told on Sunday morning that now that they have milled that off, it's smoother today on dirt than it ever was.
Pretty bad.
Yeah, well, I drove down there today, it's clay.
A little slippery on Sunday morning, but other than that, good.
So is it gonna just go, is it just only Starlight that's gonna go all the way up to the tower, or?
Yes, to the tower.
Just pa, just past that last entry into Meeker, really.
Yeah, that's correct.
But not around the corner?
No, no, no.
Does it go into the new addition, it goes all the way to the new addition, or just Meeker?
It just goes just to the water tower.
Okay, so that includes the new addition?
Does that include the same?
Yeah. Just reminder, on the twenty-second of August, we're gonna have a workshop at the chamber conference.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, the architect is gonna be there, the committee, Tony Stewart will be there, the fire chief, myself...
Do y'all have nature Friday emails?
On my schedule.
Anyway, it's three o'clock on the twenty-second.
Three, okay.
I'll be there about three-ten.
Yeah.
I substitute, but really, I substitute that day.
And I'm hoping, folks, we have a candid conversation, the drawings are about thirty percent complete, and as you read my memo from ten days ago, I have some concern about costs, I have some concerns about the economy, I have some concerns about where interest rates are going, and I'm maybe in the process of slowing this thing down, but I wanna have us a candid conversation, right now, it's scheduled to go out to bid, drawings and everything in January, February of twenty-twenty-five, but things are getting weird in the economy in place, unemployment's up to four point three percent, the ten-year note I was telling Kyle yesterday is below four percent now, which is good for if you wanna borrow money, but the architect is telling me people still, you know, construction costs are still way up there, so when we come on the twenty-second, we're gonna have a candid conversation about this fire station and where we're going and what we hope to accomplish, so.
It's a small fee in perspective of the whole eight million dollar project, but ten thousand dollars for toilet accessories, I'm ready to hear the answer to that one.
Yeah.
That's gonna be great.
It's...
It's in there, guys, I promise.
Yeah, yeah.
Toilet accessories, ten thousand dollars.
That's for the bidets.
I guess so. Hope the fire, hope the fire chief enjoys them.
Okay, so that's on the twenty-second, three o'clock, don't be late, Brittany will have some snacks for you.
Oh, you want snacks?
Give me a hammer at the chamber, we got snacks, Brittany.
Okay, I'll get snacks.
Or we'll eat all of hers.
I applied for a scholarship with OMPA, and I was granted it, they're gonna, I'm going to a financial conference in Cleveland, on, I'll be gone the seventh of September through the eleventh, we have accounts, or commission meeting on the ninth, I will not be there, I'm open to either just canceling September's meeting, or moving it a week. Brittany did some research, last September, we had three items on the agenda, September is a quiet month, we did a lot tonight with our agenda, we still have a few more things to cover, I don't know what your preference is, the mayor's fine with canceling the meeting altogether.
Just remember, you have that meeting on the twenty-second, so if you have something come up, you could always do it in your twenty-second meeting of this month, sorry.
We just have to put it, put it in the agenda forty-eight hours.
Right, and I'll post it before that anyway, so, 'cause it's a special meeting, so it will be posted, so we'll be within the open act, right for it.
And then if anything does come up, we can always have a special, special meeting.
Yes.
So hearing no objections, Brittany, we will cancel the meeting.
I'll need you to write me an amendment.
In September, the last thing Brittany asked me to emphasize with you guys, she sent you a note last week, the Oklahoma Municipal League Conference is in Tulsa this year, it is the tenth through the twelfth, if any of you are interested in attending, just let her know so she can get you registered and get you a hotel room reserved, last year, you know, we didn't get the main hotel, we were kinda on the outskirts, but it was in Oklahoma City, so I don't know if any of you are interested in going to Tulsa this year.
I sent you an email.
Yeah, I got your email.
You did, okay, all right. Other than that, Mayor, you know, and I hope you guys are reading my, my hot topics, I try to give you highlights of what's coming up in the agenda, or what's, what I'm thinking, and I always appreciate feedback, if there's something that catches your eye, don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call me, or send me an email, and I'll do some research and follow up, but other than that, Mayor, I think we did a lot of work tonight, and I appreciate the commission's support in moving this city forward.
I know it's early in that new construction at Starlight, do we have a target date, I know, I've already got people asking, will Roger took so long?
Two-hundred-and-forty-day contract.
Okay.
But that was back when it was signed in May.
Okay, they got, they got the end of the year.
Well...
Well, and here again, Jeff, and, and the mayor has been gracious to light a fire under that, that company as I have, because I told them, our city engineer made an error, it should never have been two-hundred-and-forty days, Will Rogers should've taken no more than forty-five, they were supposed to have been done by July twenty-second, according to the schedule that gave me, and I had a conversation with him on my vacation, and a conference call with Brittany, and, you know, I said, you guys started right after school got out, and here we are, schools getting ready to come in, and you're still horsing around down there, you know, well, it's hot, the Fourth of July, you know, it's hard to get employees, you know, I said, you know, and then he brought up, well, you gave us two-hundred-and-forty days, and I wanted to reach to the phone, I scratched that too.
I just know the next street over from Starlight is, is already getting complaints.
Oh, really?
With all the traffic's going down that road.
Yeah.
So it is what it is.
It is what it is. It's a public street, right?
Well, they took all the semis down that road, to get the construction ag out of there, and they just, they're trash that now.
Now, wait a minute.
No, they can't, they can't do that.
They did, and there's record of it.
Atlas has taken trucks?
Yes.
So we need to have a conversation with them.
So what they were doing was they were taking trucks down that next road, I don't know what it's called, the very next road, they would go down...
No, it's the one before that, yeah.
They would go down that first road, empty, and get their ag, and then leave the facility, and then make that loop all day long.
Empty is a little bit better than...
I agree, but if you say it shouldn't been, yeah.
It shouldn't be, but they can, they can turn around there.
So that was the loop that day, all those trucks.
So then, Jim, we need to have another conference call tomorrow.
Yeah, probably didn't.
Me and Jeff and Jim and Keenan are gonna be very good friends.
She's on Robin, which is the second, the one south.
Well, you can drive down the line.
Well, none of those roads are in good shape.
Well, this didn't, this didn't help it, is what I'm...
Yeah, for sure.
They're taking dump trucks down that road?
We were, we were tagged on Facebook with the video, you can go watch it.
I try to stay off of that.
Travis, don't we have anything that prohibits those dump trucks to be on city roads?
Yeah, they're, they're only allowed to go to the site and back out the most direct route.
Yeah.
Like we're doing the most direct.
Before, when Johnson was here, he would be, or he's, they would be who decided what that route was.
Well, let the guys know that we may have to do some traffic enforcement up there.
Where is that?
Starlight.
On Starlight?
On Starlight, in the, the...
On thirteen.
The road, the road south of Starlight.
So, Jim, that's that conference call, because on that, on that ordinance, you do have to have a direct line, where they go on that ordinance that we did for semis, so that may be something we need to have a conversation with asphalt paving about.
The only thing that would be problematic for them, depending if they're bringing in, whether it be end dumps or ten-wheelers or whatever, is where are they gonna turn around?
And I get that, I understand that.
Problematic, so we just need to have a conversation that we're all in agreement, or y'all are in agreement with the routes that they're taking.
And that's something we should do, yes, because that is in that ordinance that we did pass, so yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I don't see an item for Commissioner comments here.
By design, I'm sure.
I think so, I think so.
I had to take a three-minute timer, though.
I, I, but I'll open it up to myself, since it's in the...
It's not on the agenda.
I can create those, as you've seen before, a couple, couple, couple of things I would be interested in is an update on the GIS, we hadn't heard anything regarding the GIS in quite some time, would love to see a, an update from our engineer in regards to our SCADA system, we hadn't heard anything, well, any of the projects that they've been working on.
He sends him a weekly...
Yeah, I may not have sent that out last...
I don't think he did, because you were gone, and he did send us a weekly update on that.
Hadn't seen that in a while, just wanna make sure...
But it is in there, Jim.
You know, and then some of the priorities that we've had regarding a water study, you know, obviously, that's something that we budgeted for, and then a couple of those other studies, that's where we sit in regards to getting those out and getting moving on those, so that'd be a couple of things I'd ask about.
I would, I'd like to see at the meetings, a, and we have in the past, which was, was nice, is the aquatic center data, as to what we're doing on the aquatic center.
And we have that, I...
We do that in KRA.
Oh, so, so we're still there? Oh, so, so we're still there?
No, we still have that meeting to go to. That's usually when he gives you the update, isn't it, Eric?
Is Richard here?
Yeah, he's still here.
It was earlier.
Can you print that out? I, you know, I got it from you on Saturday, and I didn't forward it on to the commissioners.
Yeah, like in the next five minutes?
Yeah.
No, you probably have ten, Richard. You got ten.
We gotta change meetings here.
Any other?
I'll, I'll get it.
Okay.
Do we need to do these top items with the...
We have a motion to reconvene from executive meeting.
No motion, we reconvene.
I second it.
Okay. Okay, we are reconvened as the, in the regular meeting of the city commissioner, city of Kingfisher. The next item on the agenda is item N. Discussion Possible Action to Purchase Real Property at Lots eighteen and nineteen in Block nineteen in the city of Kingfisher. Do we have a motion regarding that?
I make a motion that we buy properties at Lots eighteen and nineteen in the city of Kingfisher.
For the purchase price of?
For the purchase price of twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. I'm like, it's not here.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second?
We're adding the, the purchase price on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Yeah, just so it's in the motion.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know until you come out and tell me. Who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, there you go. Kyle?
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. I assume you two fellows were here for that?
Hey, we are, we are.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is the treasures report. Ms. Nita?
Imagine you guys will please look the numbers that were on these reports this time. We have on the general fund, we have a gain of two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, mainly due to five-two-two money. We've got two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars on five-two-two this month.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars.
You got problems.
Of course, some, a couple of the categories were high. A lot of that annual fees for, on the general and on the, on the parks, you had some annual fees. But still, two-hundred-and-seventy for the year, which the sales tax came in a little bit lower than last month. I looked up on the past, one of the main differences is there was probably more oilfield and roofing construction last year than this year.
Did you jump to the sales tax report? Is that what you're doing?
That's what she's doing.
Yeah.
So you looked at July of twenty-three and, and August of twenty-three and compared it?
There really weren't any bulk payments until that one really high one. When that month hits, we'll discuss the fact that we had one-year-old money hit.
You're talking about September?
Yeah.
Yeah, September, October.
So that's where that spike came from. But on this one, there weren't any spikes. There wasn't anything really that we got downgraded on.
But we can also recognize, just to mention, we can also recognize that the revenue of July and August is less than the previous two years.
Unless there's somebody that hasn't got their tax. I don't look to make sure everybody has theirs paid in. That's why there was that one spike in September, because somebody went a year without paying tax. And so I don't look for that.
But what commissioner...
That's impossible.
Commissioner Mecklenburg is looking at a trend.
Right.
And I, I would agree with you, Commissioner. I, I am a little troubled that we may be going into a recession. People just, you know...
It's also a election year, and anybody that's in the oilfield will tell you that.
They've made some interest rate changes and, and they're, you know, they're making adjustments, but, you know, the market crashed last week and, not crashed, I shouldn't say crashed, but had a rough, rough time and we...
It hurt some four-one K's, yeah.
Grocery bills are still forty-three percent higher than they were a year ago, so it hurts.
So it's just a trend that we need to be aware of.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And that was city, sales tax, and public works page. We have a gain of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. You'll see that we got a pretty good number there on power plant. We had three months' worth of capacity come in all at once. And the bump in other revenues was one reimbursement, and then we got our annual rent payment on the Throckmorton place. And once again, administration, the bump on that annual fees, this is that time.
This did not include, our, our increase of rates went up?
This did.
This did include the increase in rates, okay.
This was, this does have the...
The first month?
The first month, yes.
So go back, Anita, on the, I'm sorry, I don't have, yeah, thank you. So two-hundred-and-fifty-two, go down just a little bit. Two-fifty-two, and that is because we had, partly because we had three payments of production for the...
Capacity, yeah.
Capacity for, what would, what are, what are those payments?
The one that we normally would have gotten by itself was around sixteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken. So instead of sixteen...
Three months, three months would be, would be fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it says fifty-two is what we got.
Fifty-two, so, so essentially, we'd, we'd have one of those payments, take out...
Right.
Take out thirty-six, thirty-two thousand dollars, so essentially, we would have, we still would have been positive two, two-twenty-two for the month.
Yes, and actually, our transfer to KPWA, since it was an odd number and we knew that they had some things going on, we transferred a little bit higher amount that'll be forty thousand dollars for the next eleven months. But we did fifty for, for this one.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the two-fifty-two would have disappeared if it was, if it wasn't for those, you know, that, that, those three payments instead of, but it looks like it, it didn't impact it very much, so that's good.
Then our last page is our cash. Our unencumbered balance at the end of the month was nine point six approximately million.
And of the two point five, one point, one point two something is the, the roads?
Yes, that is the, the roads contract for the two. We approved the first payment on one of them today.
So which will get reimbursed, so essentially, our unencumbered...
We've already got the money.
Well, we already got the money. We've been drawing interest on the money.
Oh, we already got the money. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Yeah, 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 okay.
So we got the money a year ago? Almost a year ago, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that is where we're at. Is there any other questions?
Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nan.
Uh, the next item is item P, the city manager's report.
Just a couple of things that I didn't cover in my report I sent you before I went on vacation. I was up to Shaw Park. It is almost complete. The doors are locked. I went up there this afternoon trying to get a picture. Gary got up there, Kyle, and did see they have water spigots at the same location of where they had them at the other, in Oklahoma Park. So there is water access to clean the bathrooms.
Did you get the pictures, or did he just send me the pictures?
He sent me the pictures. I, I saw them as well.
Okay, perfect.
I will be glad when that project gets wrapped up. It's a beautiful bathroom. We've spent a little bit of money up there on the tennis courts for pickleball, and we got the lights fixed. So that whole area is gonna be, hopefully, another attraction for the community. We talked about the asphalt, Aztec paving. Is it Atlas? Yeah.
Jim, can I stop you for just a second before we move on from Shaw Park?
Yeah.
I noticed that we re, we re-upped our landscaping with Mulhern for Shaw Park. Does that include mowing it and stuff, or is that just the flower beds?
Just the flower beds.
So we are still responsible for mowing it and doing up with everything? Okay, all right.
And I'm gonna get the crew up there to get that extra dirt out. There's some concrete that may, it needs to be cleaned up a little bit, but it's definitely a huge improvement over what we saw.
For sure, for sure. Thank you.
So are the bathrooms open?
No.
Okay, do we have a date for that?
They were still...
I'm gonna call Bob Bullen back in the morning and see. He, when we talked before I went on vacation, he says, "I should be all done by the fifteenth of August." I was really surprised. I found them locked when I went up there this afternoon.
Around two-thirty, they were up there working, though.
Oh, were they?
In regards to that contract, all I would ask is that you close that contract out appropriately with a final inspection before we make payment. And that somebody, you or one of your folks or multiple people, go through that with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that it met everything that we desired in regards to the contract, because we've not done that in a lot of situations, so.
Bob has been...
Yeah, for sure.
You know, he's a good guy. He hasn't asked for any partial payments or anything. He's just gonna give me one invoice at the end. That's just the way he is. He's got a big heart.
The only thing I would ask, Jim, is the, the locks, the automatic locks. We need to make sure on that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that has to have internet also then, too, right?
Which we've already talked to Pioneer about that.
Okay.
So, yes, I'm on it on that part.
It's probably not installed?
No, it won't be until, I have to tell them the exact date. They told me that I need to let them know.
So that will also be able to have cameras direct?
Yes.
Cameras and locks, right?
Probably not gonna open those until we have those ready to go? Is that the assumption?
Probably so.
We'll keep the porta-potties up there.
But I will get on it as soon as I can. If they can go up there, I'll do that.
Heck, you spent a hundred thousand dollars on your porta-potties since we closed that. I'm just kidding. We spent some money.
Scratch that.
Yeah, yeah, can you edit that out? That was not...
Them porta-potties.
Yeah, sorry.
They are moving on Starlight. I went up there this afternoon. The mayor and I talked about that. I don't know when they built that road, but there's about an inch of asphalt that they took off, and there's no aggregate. They must have just laid asphalt on dirt. It, it's gonna be, those folks are gonna be happy when that's all done, but it's gonna be a, a challenge to get it done.
For the, for the record, I was told on Sunday morning that now that they have milled that off, it's smoother today on dirt than it ever was.
Pretty bad.
Yeah, if I drove down there today, it's clay.
A little slippery on Sunday morning, but other than that, good.
So is it gonna just go, is it just only Starlight that's gonna go all the way up to the tower or how far back?
Yes, to the tower.
Just pa, just past that last entry into Meeker, really.
Yeah, that's correct.
But not around the corner?
No. No, no.
Does it go into the New Edition? It goes all the way to the New Edition or just Meeker?
It just goes just to the water tower.
Okay, that includes the New Edition.
Does that include the same?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a reminder, on the twenty-second of August, we're gonna have a workshop at the Chamber Conference.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock. The architect is gonna be there, the committee, Tony Stewart will be there, the fire chief, myself.
Do y'all got your Friday emails?
On my schedule.
Anyway, it's three o'clock on the twenty-second.
Three.
I'll be there about three-ten.
Yeah.
I substitute, but really, I'll substitute that day.
And I'm hoping, folks, we have a candid conversation. The drawings are about thirty percent complete. And as you read my memo from ten days ago, I have some concern about costs. I have some concerns about the economy. I have some concerns about where interest rates are going, and I'm maybe in the process of slowing this thing down, but I want to have us a candid conversation. Right now, it's scheduled to go out to bid drawings and everything in January, February of 2025. But things are getting weird in the economy. Unemployment's up to four point three percent. The ten-year note I was telling Kyle yesterday is below four percent now, which is good for if you want to borrow money. But the architect is telling me people still, you know, construction costs are still way up there. So when we come on the twenty-second, we, we're gonna have a candid conversation about this fire station and where we're going and what we hope to accomplish, so.
It's a small fee in perspective of the whole eight million dollar project, but ten thousand dollars for toilet accessories, I'm ready to hear the answer to that one.
Yeah.
That's gonna be great.
It's...
It's in there, guys, I promise.
Yeah.
Toilet accessories, ten thousand dollars.
That's for the bidets.
I guess so.
Oh, wow.
Hope the fire, hope the fire chief enjoys them.
Okay, so that's on the twenty-second, three o'clock. Don't be late. Brittany will have some snacks for you.
Oh, you want snacks?
Give me hammer at the chamber, we got a snack, Brittany.
Okay, I'll get snacks.
Or we'll eat all of hers.
I applied for a scholarship with OMPA, and I was granted it. They're gonna, I'm going to a financial conference in Cleveland on, I'll be gone the seventh of September through the eleventh. We have a council or commission meeting on the ninth. I will not be there. I'm open to either just canceling September's meeting or moving it a week. Brittany did some research. Last September, we had three items on the agenda. September is a quiet month. We did a lot tonight with our agenda. We still have a few more things to cover. I don't know what your preference is. The mayor's fine with canceling the meeting altogether.
Just remember, you have that meeting on the twenty-second.
Yeah.
So if you have something come up, you could always do it in your twenty-second meeting of this month.
We just have to put it, put it in the agenda forty-eight hours.
Right, and I'll post it before that anyway, so, because it's a special meeting, so it will be posted, so we'll be within the open act record.
And then if anything does come up, we can always have a special, special meeting.
Yes.
So hearing no objections, Brittany, we will cancel the meeting.
I'll need you to write me an amendment.
In September. The last thing Brittany asked me to emphasize with you guys, she sent you a note last week. The Oklahoma Municipal League Conference is in Tulsa this year. It is the tenth through the twelfth. If any of you are interested in attending, just let her know so she can get you registered and get you a hotel room reserved. Last year, you know, we didn't get the main hotel. We were kinda on the outskirts, but it was in Oklahoma City, so I don't know if any of you are interested in going to Tulsa this year.
I sent you an email.
Yeah, I got you an email.
You did? Okay.
I got her.
Other than that, Mayor, you know, and I, I hope you guys are reading my, my hot topics. I, I try to give you highlights of what's coming up in the agenda or what's, what I'm thinking, and I always appreciate feedback. If there's something that catches your eye, don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call me or send me an email and I'll, I'll do some research and follow up. Other than that, Mayor, I think we did a lot of work tonight, and I appreciate the commission's support in moving this city forward.
I know it's early in that new construction at Starlight, but do we have a target date? I know I've already got people asking this yet. Will Rogers took so long?
Two-hundred-and-forty-day contract.
Okay.
But that was back when it was signed in May.
Okay, they got, they got the end of the year.
Well...
Well, and here again, Jeff, and, and the mayor has been gracious to light a fire under that, that company as I have, because I told them, our city engineer made an error. It should never have been two-hundred-and-forty days. Will Rogers should have taken no more than forty-five. They were supposed to have been done by July twenty-second, according to the schedule they gave me. And I had a conversation with him on my vacation in a conference call with Brittany. And, you know, I said, "You guys started right after school got out, and here we are, schools getting ready to come in, and you're still horsing around down there." You know, "Well, it's hot, the Fourth of July, you know, it's hard to get employees." You know, I said, you know, and then he brought up, "Well, you gave us two-hundred-and-forty days," and I wanted to reach to the phone. I scratched that, too.
I just know the next street over from Starlight is, is already getting complaints.
Oh, really?
With all the traffic going down that road.
Yeah.
So it is what it is.
It is what it is. It's a public street, man.
Well, they took all the semis down that road to get the construction ag out of there. And they just, they're trash that now.
Now, wait a minute.
No, they can't, they can't do that.
They did, and there's record of it.
Atlas has taken trucks?
Yes.
So we need to have a conversation with them.
So what they were doing was they were taking trucks down that next road. I don't know what it's called.
Yeah.
The very next road. They would go down...
No, it's the one before that. Yeah.
They would go down that first road, empty, and get their ag and then leave the facility and then make that loop all day long.
Empty is a little bit... Empty is a little bit better than.
I agree, but if you say it shouldn't been, yeah.
It shouldn't be, but they can, they can turn around there.
So that was the loop that they do, all those trucks.
So then Jim, we need to have another conference call tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably didn't.
Me and Jeff and Jim and Keenan are gonna be very good friends.
She's on the first.
She's on Robin, which is the second, the one south.
Well, you can drive down the line.
I was gonna say, Robin's the one.
Well, none of those roads are in good shape.
No.
Well, this did, this didn't help it as well.
Yeah, for sure.
They're taking dump trucks down that road?
We were, we were tagged on Facebook with the video. You can go watch it.
I try to stay off of that.
Travis, don't we have anything that prohibits those dump trucks to be on city roads?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're only allowed to go to the site and back out the most direct route.
Yeah.
They were doing the most direct.
Before when Johnson was here, he would be, or east, they would be deciding what that route was.
Well, let the guys know that we may have to do some traffic enforcement up there.
Where is that?
Starlight.
On Starlight?
On Starlight and, and the, uh.
On thirteen.
The road, the road south of Starlight.
So Jim, that's that conference call because on that, on that ordinance, you do have to have a direct line where they go on that ordinance that we did for semis. So that may be something we need to have a conversation with asphalt paving about.
Okay.
The only thing that would be problematic for them, depending if they're bringing in, whether, whether it be N dumps or, or ten-wheelers or whatever, is where are they gonna turn around?
And I get that. I, I understand that too.
Problematic, so we just need to have a conversation that we're all in agreement, or y'all are in agreement with the routes that they're taking.
And that's something we should do, yes, because that is in that ordinance that we did pass, so yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Uh, I don't see an item for commissioner comments here.
By design, I'm sure.
I think so. I think so.
I think a three-minute timer though.
I, I, but I'll open it up for myself since it is on.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I can pre-lead those as you've seen before. Couple, couple, couple of things I would be interested in is an update on the GIS. We hadn't heard anything.
Oh, okay.
Regarding the GIS in quite some time. Um, would love, um, uh, to see a, um, an update from our engineer in regards to our SCADA system. We hadn't heard anything, well, any of the projects that they've been working on.
He sends him a weekly.
Yeah, I may not have sent that out last.
I don't think he did because you were gone and he did send us a weekly update on that.
Hadn't, hadn't seen that in a while. Just wanna make sure.
But it is in there, Jim.
Okay.
You know, and then some of the priorities that we've had regarding, um, a, a water study, um, you know, obviously that's something that we budgeted for. Uh, and then a couple of those other studies, that's where we sit in regards to getting those out and getting moving on those, so that'd be a couple of things I'd ask about.
Um, I would, uh, I'd like to see at the meetings, a, and we have in the past, which was, was nice, is the, the aquatic center, uh, data. As to what we're doing on the aquatic center.
Be right there.
And we have that, I.
It's, we do that in KRA.
Oh, so, so we, we're still there?
No, we still have that meeting to go to. That's usually when he gives you the update, isn't it, Eric?
Is Richard here?
Yeah, he's still there.
It was earlier.
Can you print that out? I, you know, I got it from you on Saturday and I didn't forward it on to the commissioners.
Yeah, like in the next five minutes?
Yeah.
No, you probably have ten, Richard. You got ten.
We gotta change meetings here.
Any other?
I'll, I'll, I'll get it.
Okay.
Do we need to do these, uh, top items with the, um, the agreements at the top?
Nope.
No, they're, they're consent.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that was a consent document.
And.
I have a question about, uh.
All those agreements?
My, my question would be since schools about to start, do we figure out what we're doing with school traffic?
Yes, the elementary school is going back to its original, uh, process. They're no longer gonna have one-way streets going fourteen different ways.
We're pulling the signs, right?
Yeah, we're pulling the signs. That was brought up at staff meeting today.
At.
Um, so, yeah.
What about Toronto? What about the school traffic on Toronto with that little half a stop sign thing?
That's inside the fence?
You know how they park all the way up and then you have to stop on the, the wrong side of the road and then keep going? Have we figured out what we're doing with that because?
I haven't, haven't had any complaints about that one.
Oh, well, here's your complaint.
Are you talking about the one that's just inside the fence? They didn't have a fence there for.
Yeah, the stop sign is inside the fence, but what happens when traffic is, when school is being in or out, cars are all lined up right there. So you have to go on the wrong side of the road and the, and your officers expect someone to stop where the stop sign is supposed to be while you're facing oncoming traffic, then scoot back over and then drive down the road.
That's not a regular, it's not a regulated size either. It's a really.
Oh, yeah, it's a weird stop sign.
Manager.
All it takes is one and, and the rest follow.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's pretty tough, but yeah, we can, we can get it.
Okay, cause my only concern is the fact that when you're going around them, you're expected to stop while you have traffic coming towards you.
Is that like Toronto on Ninth?
So you're, you're technically driving the, on the wrong side of the road and the expectation is to stop.
That's a three-way stop.
While you're on the wrong side of the road and then continue and go around them. And that's a little.
You stop and stop moving again.
Right, and then there's, and then there's traffic coming towards you and you're supposed to just stop. So I think that's setting somebody up for like a busy issue. And they give tickets if you don't, so just saying.
That's another one, just like on the chism, you know, whenever the folks, uh, get on the wrong side of the road there. That, that's part of the plan for Thursday morning is to try to get them started out on their side of the road. Uh, don't know when, when, I mean, it's been several years ago that that started. They started lining up, going into oncoming traffic and, and, uh, uh, if one of them turns out, then they're in the wrong lane. If somebody hits them and that person's in the wrong lane now because they're all in their lane.
Right.
And it just makes a kinda issue. All it takes is one person to plug us the intersection and.
Well, good luck on that one.
Shut down to both directions.
It's gonna be a hard one to break.
Well, you need to airlift Gilmore out. Put it over in a vacant field somewhere. The city grew to it. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Jim, any, any response back for me, the, the sports leaks around designs or?
No, nothing. For our meeting, we had a month or so.
We didn't follow back up on that. I mean, that's.
I was gonna say, they called me, the soccer people did.
I have heard nothing.
We met with them about a month ago, the soccer, the football.
No, no, was it Dominique? Are you confusing me? Did you turn that on record?
Dominique was there.
Did you get that on record?
Unbelievable.
You're gonna get hard about that later.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
That's a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second.
Oh, goodness.
There was no confusion.
Stop, you guys.
Yes.
All in favor, Samir can get to his crayon movie?
Twister.
I need to go see that.
Yeah.
You need to see The Forge, cause it's free. You know, they got free shows.
So we are adjourned. We'll reconvene as, um, the, uh, Kingfisher Public Works Authority?
That's a big agenda.
Yeah, we handle that one.
So, uh, the first item on the agenda is the consent docket. Do we have any questions, any, any concerns, any things that we need to pull out in regards to the claims? Or do, if not, do we have a motion?
Have a motion, we approve the consent docket.
Have a motion?
A second motion.
Second by Commissioner Burpo.
Kyle?
Yes.
Consent docket is unanimously approved. We have no new scheduled, no, new, new scheduled business items or no new business. Boy, I can find both of them. So do we have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Burpo. And I, I'll say.
I said yes.
Oh, okay. We are adjourned as the Kingfisher Public Works Authority will reconvene as Kingfisher Recreational Authority. Um, first item on the agenda is the consent docket. Uh, so in regards to the consent docket, which is kind of interesting that we have the discussion and possible action to approve a maintenance agreement with Air Technologies within the consent, uh, docket.
Cause wait, that's an agreement. You can put it in the consent docket.
Okay, any, any, anything, any comments that you wanna make in regards to that or?
I think it's a good agreement. Uh, it's like an insurance policy. Uh, Richard and I have talked to Air Technologies about it. Um, if the compressor goes out, if the, uh, heaters go out, they're all covered sour, or, um, uh, materials and labor. Um, so it's a pretty good agreement. You wanna add anything to that, Richard?
I, I can come up there and read, uh, just two real quick paragraphs.
All right, come on up here.
No, you got two minutes.
Linda has some extra time to gamey, right?
No, yeah. You got three minutes, cause they only give you a three-minute timer.
Here's any mention, here's what it includes. Uh, program includes labor, um, and material to inspect clean and is required, change filters, change belts, and, um, uh, service and maintain the new, uh, automated, uh, control systems also. Um, program includes all required maintenance supplies to effectively implement our, our, uh, maintenance program. Program includes a replacement of worn, faded or doubtful maintainable components, uh, including the typical maintainable components, parts of the compressors, motors, contactors, motor actuators, sensors. And, um, uh, then finally, the program includes the labor to repair those. So it includes the item and then include, includes the labor to repair or replace worn, failed, doubtful components.
All-inclusive of the HVAC system is what you're saying?
Correct. Uh, that includes the HVAC that is the AC and that includes the pool pack and that includes the, uh, pumps to take them down.
Cool. Is, is this, I assume you vetted this? I mean, it would be on here, but.
Yes.
It's a reasonable price regarding that annual?
And we've got it budgeted. It is budgeted.
Good.
I, I, I call it an insurance policy because the building is twenty-five years old. Uh, we've spent a substantial two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last seven months trying to get it upgraded. I don't wanna lose everything we've gained, but I also realize there are things that are wearing out down there.
And, and one of the things we've done is, is now it's an umbrella group. Um, you know, if we went back and looked at, uh, what the costs were before, we're paying three or four different, uh, HVAC groups.
Yeah.
Uh, none of which, if you recall, had ever talked to, talked to each other as of January. So, and those costs were always, you know, twenty-two hundred this, five thousand this. So what we're doing is focusing on one group and allowing them to become, as expert as they already are, familiar with what our system is, re-familiar because Air Tech used to do this.
Right.
So re-familiar with their system, they're the ones that gave us all the, um, uh, improvements over the last seven months. So it's a group we know, they knew us, and now we've got like umbrella, umbrella coverage versus, you know, a dime here and a dime there.
Thank you, Richard. Any, any other questions?
What's the custody agreement? I'll have it from you.
Forty-eight.
I'm sorry. Forty-eight K a year?
But I believe Air Tech is the one, is that the, the guy's name's Don?
Don Self.
Yeah, cause he said he knows system like the back of his hand or whatever, cause he was there when they first built it.
Yeah, he was a technician and he's moving on up in the company.
Yeah, yeah.
It was gonna be a major announcement.
I mean, just off his name, I think he's trustworthy.
When you say it's budgeted, how is this, how is this budgeted as a, in, in the budget?
It's, there's forty-eight thousand dollars in the budget, just for this service and maintenance.
Yeah, we knew this is a service agreement that's gonna come up.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I had started talking to him back in April and saying, what kind of policy or insurance can I get? That, I, I can't go to the commissioners every year and say, hey, I need another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so he started working on that and we finalized it in July after our meeting.
Okay.
And so this is the first chance we've got.
And, and they've been very good. There's a couple of items that they went ahead and went out on limb for us. Paid, paid for, brought in welders, uh, did some work on the pump, uh, and other items that they did and Jim is A-one, five-star to his arms, and, uh, he was able to have them do some pro bono work for us, probably near the ten, eleven thousand dollar range, which was good for us and helped us get up and going and stuff, so.
Do we have a motion regarding the, uh, consent docket?
I make a motion, we approve the consent docket.
Give me a second.
Here we go.
Yes.
Okay, um, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, we have no other scheduled business, but apparently.
Yeah, right?
I know, but as a point of personal privilege, like you took the privilege.
This is my maybe. Go ahead.
Okay.
You need a timer?
No.
Three minutes is up.
Savannah has taken over as the Aquatic Center Pool Director.
Okay.
She worked for us in nineteen, nineteen, twenty?
Nineteen.
You're looking at this for great. I missed your birthday.
You, you age well. Twenty seventeen?
Uh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, for a couple of years.
Yeah.
She was an assistant pool director at the time, working with Peggy and, um, has pursued some other careers and she's come back to us. Um, she's been on board about ten days, working with Richard, uh, being mentored by him. And, uh, some things are the same, some things have changed, uh, but she's excited about the new opportunities she's got. Uh, she has some long-term goals, uh, that we're hoping to achieve in the next five years. And, uh, it's just good to have her on board. Um, she will be doing what Richard's been doing the last, you know, eight months. Uh, Richard may stay on as a, uh, more as an advisory role going forward. He's got a couple of weeks off in September and Savannah will have the whole ship by herself then, so hopefully in the next two weeks, they'll have some intense training, so. I don't know, Savannah, you wanna say anything? You, you're looking forward to the future. Uh, she attended our first staff meeting today and got acquainted with my, uh, management style and she sat through the commission meeting. I kept looking over there and she was kinda hiding a little bit. Just listening, but, um, I think she'll be a great asset to the team and it's good to have you on board.
Yeah.
They're really very easygoing. It's good you came and listened to the discussion. I mean, we had a variety of things on the agenda and there's give and take. You know, I mean, there's a little bit of levity and, but there's also seriousness and, uh, we do good work, so it's good to have you on board.
Yeah, welcome, for sure. I, I will tell you, just from my perspective, we, we've invested a lot of the taxpayers' money into that facility and we, we hope, uh, that people recognize that and, uh, I know that all of us here will support you in what you're doing there. So, uh, if there's anything that we can do to assist, by all means, bring it to us, for sure.
The other thing, Richard, why don't you share with them your latest report, your KSI?
Okay, just there, uh.
Pass it around, pass it out.
Yeah, I have a couple items. I just have six, so they just put that.
Interesting.
What if I want more than one?
Yeah, interesting, we're still, um, holding it sixty-fourty. Sixty percent of the residents that are enjoying the pool are coming from outside the city of Kingfisher. Uh, one of the things Richard and I have talked about is that he's gonna help Savannah is do a marketing, better marketing to our residents in Kingfisher of, uh, what the benefits are to using the aquatic center. Go ahead.
So when the churches come and do their baptisms, are you counting those as attendance?
Uh, we count anybody that comes in there.
And have you recorded that to put that on your social media?
Uh, do you know what? I, we did one of the baptisms, I think, a couple of months ago. I did get some pictures. Uh, uh, Frontline came over there and, you know, did baptism and, and I will tell you, it is like the coolest thing.
Yeah.
It is the coolest thing.
I was gonna say, I wonder a couple of churches now, yeah.
Um, uh, the churches do like to come there. They, uh, I think, geez, we've had at least a half a dozen. Um, yesterday was Lifeway Church. a dozen, yesterday was Lifeway Church, they had about eighty, many people there, of course, those will be counted in the statistics and stuff, so just a couple of notes, the information I gave you, by the way, is year-to-date, but that's only one month, so what you don't have next to you is the previous three months, so we're tracking now, in just four months, we, full-time, May, June, and July, and a little bit of April, we're tracking about sixty-five hundred patrons have come in, so, you know, we've got, what, about eight months to go to make it a year since we reopened, and I think we're on track to about, have about twelve thousand swimmers and patrons come in there and stuff, we're tracking ten thousand dollars a month, now, because it's just our busiest time, Savannah, in her experience, we've gotten together and we're discussing what are the hours gonna look like, I call them winter hours, I think she calls them school hours, but the idea is, it's a long winter for us.
School sounds better than talk.
You know, September to, to May, those are our slower months and stuff, Savannah's got some great ideas about some activities, I think, in the works, I'm gonna spill the beans, is that okay? I, I want them to know that your, your creative, creativity that you bring, they're talking about doing a cornhole, night over there at the pool, the parents can play cornhole, the kids can swim, there's been talking about, I call it a dive-in movie, but showing a movie at the place, I think there's, we, in early discussions of, I've run into so many lifeguards around the community, that, hey, I used to be a lifeguard, so we kind of thought about doing a lifeguard reunion, maybe do that around homecoming, here in town, we thought that would be fun, and see some lifeguard quality, so, you know, we've got some things, I didn't get to a lot of the marketing, just because there was so much work to just get the thing over and stuff, I hope when I come back from a little vacation, which by the way, will be seven and a half months, seven, three sixty-five, so Jim's gonna allow me to take two weeks off and go babysit a couple chihuahuas, but I think, I think we're in a groove, I think we're in a good rhythm, I think it's a good time to make a little transition to new management, one of the things that we did do, I just didn't show them the stats, cause I don't have the, through previous months, but Jill was very committed to doing a family night, so Friday's night, Friday nights were, was one of our busier nights, but we have tripled attendance by going and making a family night from four to eight, so all day, what they do, they do get to come at a lower rate, it's five dollars a family, a regular family's twenty-five on a regular day, and we get easily eighty to ninety, I think we, actually, one night we did a hundred swimmers in those four hours, so I think there's some things, and, and when I first got here, I, I thought that, that the pools, it's a great thing, but there was just not any marketing for the few years that it was gonna go right there, so now it's up, everybody loves it, and now we'll get some marketing, see if we can get people coming back.
So do y'all have commercials with the, over there, with the theater?
Oh, what was that?
Do you have commercials with the theaters?
Commercials.
Cause in the, the theater, they show commercials between the movies, like, for different local businesses?
Those all cost money. So, Savannah will be approaching that issue with her boss, okay?
I have a question regarding the deep end of the pool, is there a plan?
Yes.
Savannah to do something, that's the main complaint I've heard, especially from our older kids, why don't, why do we have to stay in the baby side of the pool?
Good one, and can I answer that, do you mind?
She's already.
Cause I'm gonna hand it off to her.
There's no grading.
There is still construction issues on that deep end.
Okay.
And it's not just the diving boards, to complete the slide pool and the swim pool, we had to take grates from the deep end, you know, we had to cannibalize grates that were not broken and stuff, and we moved them to that side, so we completed the surrounding grates on those two pools, but in doing so, we have gutter, and the gutter's about nine inches wide, open, also, we've got some leftover one-meter dive equipment, which, by the way, will be coming to your desk, probably, maybe in your work session or whatever, we had it approved, but unbeknownst to me, there was the, the threshold, and I got a PO for seventeen thousand for the diving board, and it was told, wow, Richie, you can't really do that, you gotta come before you guys, so that'll be coming for you shortly, so the idea is, get a one-meter board up, and then Jim and I took a drive out to Romanos, and they have a climbing wall, and it's actually pretty nice, they don't use it, and I've been in contact with them, see if they may sell it to us at a discount, and we can put our climbing wall up fairly soon, grates are due this week, we've repainted the pedestal, we still have to be careful, but we probably will have the, by end of month, we'll have that deep dive pool open, for the senior swimmers and for the regular swimmers.
So it's a race for Starlight or the pool? Which one's gonna get in first, the deep end or Starlight?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, comments? Yeah, thank you so, so much, welcome again, Savannah.
She will answer everything from now on. And you only get three minutes.
I wouldn't even talk to her.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? Have a motion, and a second by Commissioner Taylor. Yes.